...agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency Regular Meeting. This is your blue agenda. We've already called the meeting to order. Let's go ahead and have roll call.
Council meeting, sorry, Councilmember Brinkman.
Present.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkin.
Here.
And Mayor Asher.
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the Hides States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to our consent calendar.
Public comment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, twice I've done this now. This is the time for public comments this evening. Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Asher, councilmembers. I am Mira Desai, your senior planner. I'm speaking here as the SEIU Emeryville Chapter President. A few years ago, I was in a similar position. I came and talked to you. At that time, a number of things were different. The economy was bad and also the labor-management relations were bad. I'm happy to report that there has been improvement in both these aspects. I would particularly like to give thanks to Justinian Care. He was the interim HR manager who made a lot of changes which kind of changed the pattern of labor-management relationships. And I'm happy to report that Ian, the permanent HR manager, has continued that trend. And our negotiations so far have been very productive, for most part. We have been able to sort out a number of things that in an MOU includes, not just the money factor. There are other things that needed to be cleaned up. And I'm happy to report that we actually had a conversation about different things, very, very unlike the last time. So we come here to talk to you about what our economic proposal is. We took a lot of time and consideration in giving our proposal. I'm sure your team, your negotiating team, has shared that with you. We gave them documentation of why we feel that the city is in a position to give us a 12% raise over three years. And this is keeping in mind the dissolution of the agency, the needs of the city in order to be able to replace what the agency used to do in terms of capital improvements. But you do realize that we also work here. Part of my team, negotiating team, works in finance and economic development. So when we came up with these numbers, they were not just pulled out of the air. We considered what is right and what is fair. And I would like to say that we are going to stick to it. And I would really urge the council to move in our direction. Because what is at the table right now is very far from what we have asked. With that, that's all I have to say. I would like to introduce, there's been some changes in our negotiating team. Bobby Lopez, who was our union rep, she has decided to leave and she's now working with the San Francisco. So in her place, we have two people here. This is Seneca, Seneca Scott, and he is the chief negotiator for us.
Hi. So good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for being present here with us tonight. So Maru kind of just said it all, so I'm gonna be rather quick. My official title is the East Bay Director for SEIU 10-1. And I've been on the ground almost a year now. I've been doing this for a while. I'm actually one of the few people who actually did what they went to college for. So I've seen a lot, public and private sector. And I've never seen anything like I've seen in the Bay Area. And so what I wanted to talk about tonight was the cultural entrenchment, the old paradigm between management and labor. And how we've been working aggressively to shed those, to work with a more interest-based aspect, to be more positive. And I won't say non-confrontational, but not malicious, not taking it personal. Because we do acknowledge that the Bay Area, if we are one of the most progressive areas in the country, that's probably likely reflected in its residents and likely reflected in its electors. We hope so. So what I'm here to say today is that, to reiterate, Maru, our members think that, and the union agrees, that 12% raise over four years is fair. Now, I know in council, the first thing, your natural state, is to think, is it affordable? If it is affordable, are we setting the bar too high? There's lots of things. I've been in management shoes. I've negotiated contracts for management in private sector. So I would ask you to reconsider thinking about it a different way of, if at all possible, how would having some of the best wages in the Bay Area improve your city and your ability to provide services, right? It's a different way of thinking. Allow yourself to ponder that. And we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Jeffrey, and I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution to close the commercial property loophole in Prop 13. Since 1978, the tax burden in California has shifted over to working families. We have the highest income and sales taxes in the country. And communities across California are forced to pass parcel taxes and bond measures year after year, just to fund our schools and our public services.
It's actually on our next agenda, not on this meeting? I don't know if you want to speak when that's on our agenda.
You're welcome to speak now.
Oh, I was under the impression that it was gonna be voted on at this meeting.
It is tonight. It's just on a subsequent agenda. You could go ahead and continue your comments.
My apologies.
That's fine.
Well, I'll just finish my comment then. Well, as I mentioned, communities across California are passing parcel taxes and bond measures year after year in order to fund our schools and our public services, and still it's not enough. We're currently 49th in the nation in education funding, while Disneyland is still paying 1975-level property taxes. But it doesn't have to be this way. And after 36 years now, it's time that California joins everywhere else in the country and regularly reassess commercial property. Prop 13 was passed to protect homeowners, not large corporations. And I urge you to pass this resolution tonight and make Prop 13 do what it was intended to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public this evening?
Movie consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Close in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Okay, on to administrative item number 4.1, pre-2011 excess bond proceeds funding agreement, Mr. Biddle.
Yes, and I'll just note that this is also on your council agenda, item 8.1. And additionally... Sorry? No, that's fine. Additionally, I put on your dais, and there are copies up here for anybody who wants a...
Ken, you got discotheque going on back there?
There's a Green Line version that shows changes against what was initially put in the packet to make some corrections as to the actual dollar amount that we are talking about as part of this funding agreement, as well as the fund that it's coming out of. So essentially, what this is, is a funding agreement between the city and the successor agency. It's one of the benefits that flows out of the dissolution process. Once the successor agency obtained its finding of completion from the Department of Finance, once that was obtained, the successor agency was then able to utilize pre-2011 excess bond proceeds for the purposes for which they were initially issued. And in this context, the...
Ken.
Ken.
In this context, there, when the redevelopment agency was dissolved, there was approximately $24.5 million of bond proceeds that were still left unexpended. Previously, the council and successor agency authorized an agreement for funding of $21.2 million for the ECL project. The balance remaining was approximately $3.3 million. This agreement calls for the transfer to the city of roughly $3.8 million, where the extra roughly $500,000 comes from, is that the city has sought a grant of roughly $465,000 for the ECL project that, have we... We haven't heard back. Okay, so it's on the prospect that if we do obtain it, then we will be able to put those funds into the ECL project, remove a like amount that was pledged already, and then be able to use them for redevelopment projects pursuant to this funding agreement. So that's the purpose of the agreement. Again, it provides for roughly $3.8 million that the city could then utilize to expand on projects that were identified in the five-year capital, or not the capital improvement program, but the five-year implementation plan of the redevelopment agency. Some of those projects I just mentioned in the staff report would include the pedestrian bridge, South Bay Front Pedestrian Bridge, the Art Center, things of that nature. There's a whole laundry list of projects that you probably have seen that are in that plan. And so you have the ability to allocate those funds as part of your CIP, which is a discussion the council will be having in the coming months. So with that, we're recommending approval.
Questions, comments from council?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. An awful lot of work has gone into this, and it's, we owe a big debt to staff for the meticulous way in which they are pursuing these particular arcane arrangements that have come upon us from the demise of the redevelopment agency. And I would move this resolution. I think it's, we're certainly keeping up in a timely fashion with this change. So I'd make that motion.
I would second it.
And I'd just like to add that it's very interesting, if anyone's interested in kind of a snapshot in time of where redevelopment was in 2010, just before dissolution. This five-year implementation plan not only covers what was completed with redevelopment funds, but it also anticipates a number of projects which will never materialize because of the end of redevelopment. But it really is a snapshot of where Emeryville was and where it was going. And as we consider our capital improvement program, our SIP, as we call it, plan this spring, we'll be grappling with some of those same projects and recognizing that we're never going to be able to do what's we thought possible.
Thank you.
That's a motion.
However, that means that there are other funds that have been freed up for many other purposes as well. So it's not all one way or the other.
That's a motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And 4.2, resolution of the City of Emeryville Successor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency, approving and adopting the ROPS for the period of July 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014.
Good evening, councilmembers. And Mayor Asher, this evening, you have before you the recognized obligation payment schedule for the first six months of fiscal year 2014-15, which starts July 2014 through December 2014. So as you all know, every six months, the Department of Finance requires us to list all of the obligations or all of the payments, really the cash payments that we expect to be paying in that six-month period. And in some cases, we're drawing down money that we already have on hand, and in some cases, we're requesting new, what they call RPTTF, or the property tax money that was previously called tax increment. And so you have your gigantic spreadsheet. The cover sheet is a summary that states that we are requesting to draw down $3.869 or $3.7 million of bond proceeds, which our city attorney just spoke about. So the agreement that he just presented and you just approved, plus $40,000 of housing bond proceeds. There was an action that you took by resolution previously to fund a matching EPA grant for the 3706 San Pablo Avenue property, but it never got on a ROPS. So this is just kind of following up with that and putting it on the ROPS to provide for that $40,000 in matching funds that was required for that grant. And so that's the bond proceeds section. And that is utilizing the majority of our bond proceeds with those two actions. It also is requesting the use of $11.9 million of reserve funds and $1.6 million of other funds that we still had on hand. Now, I put together a table for you to try to make it easier to understand. I'm not sure if it helps. But here, I'm just showing, this is what our current request is. The first column is just showing the bond proceeds that I mentioned. The remaining housing bonds, the housing bond proceeds are about $126,000. It'll accumulate some interest, and we will bring something forward in future ROPS to utilize those monies. The next column is called Obligations Paid With Other Funds. That includes the reserve amount and the other amounts that we had on hand. And as I mentioned, that's, it's a sum of about $13 million, I think. And the majority of that is the debt service payments. So $10.6 million of debt service payments are due September 1st, and that's coming out of that money. And then there's an additional $2.8 million, which includes kind of a placeholder for some eminent domain that we might do, just to put a number in there, and then some other costs. The way they set up the ROPS is they really are requiring us to ask for the money twice, almost, because they do it on a cash basis. So you decide that you have an expenditure, and you say, I'm gonna pay this in the six month period. But sometimes, that doesn't happen in the six-month period. So we ask for it again in the following six-month period, just to make sure if there's any carryover in the cutoff. So in some cases, we ask for new money, but then we show it again in this column of reserves, just to make sure that we don't lose the authority to spend the money that they've already granted us. And there is a formula for making sure that we keep track of the amounts we haven't spent. So anyways, this here is just showing you that through this request, if we spend all the money that we suggest we're gonna spend, we will have zeroed out our balances. So the previous times I've come to you, we still had some money in our pocket. But the law says draw down the balances that you currently have before you ask for new money. So we've been doing that slowly but surely. And of course, these are all estimates. And they're based on, you know, conservative estimates. Like I mentioned before, we put out the amounts that we will possibly spend, and so that we have the authority for it. It doesn't mean that we will be spending all of these in the six-month period. So that's what this is supposed to show. We're requesting new ROPS money of about $7.2 million with the $215,000 for admin. And in your staff report, it does talk about, there were a few new items. Most of them are recurring items. But the last, I think, six items on the ROPS are new items. Many of them are very administrative. I'll just point them out to you. Line 108 is a lease agreement for the Amtrak station. So there's maintenance costs that were required. We already have an agreement. We're putting $50,000 in there for the six-month period. Line 109 is the excess bond proceeds, the $3.8 million that we just had on our previous item. Line 110 is the $40,000 of housing bond proceeds. Line 111 is an agreement we have to maintain a parking garage. That's a current agreement. We're requesting that the redevelopment property tax money pay for that. Also, the PG&E bills associated with that parking garage maintenance agreement. And then in the ROPS 1314A, they did actually short us money. Remember, we request the money, the Department of Finance provides authority, but then the county auditor controller can only pay what's available. And so the amount available was $774,000 less than what we had requested. So the process is that you go back and you request it again on a future ROPS. And so that's what line 113 is, the unfunded debt service reserve allowance. So those are the new items. And let's see, I just, also in the reporting model, it requests that we give them the estimated cash balances. That's where they're trying to make sure that we tell them all the money that we still have on hand. So we just finished our audit, so it was easy to have a very good starting point. And this is really just trying to show you over the last two ROPS periods. So this is for the 1314 fiscal year, which we have completed only six months of that. So the first three lines there is for the July through December period, and then the second three lines is for the coming six months, so it's estimates. But that is showing that at the end of this fiscal year, which is right before the ROPS period begins, we would have $3.5 million of bond proceeds, which we're drawing down. We have on hand the $10.6 million for debt service, which we'll be paying in the next period. And then there's the $774,000 negative that is showing the amount that they shorted us. And the admin obligation will zero out. They had previously shorted us, and then they paid it on this current ROPS. So we're square with them in that one. So this is my attempt to explain to you exactly where the money is. Unfortunately, the spreadsheet that they provide, don't even try to look at this, it has formulas in there that are populated automatically. And the result is that it ends with a negative 11.3. Is that three? I did bring my glasses.
11.3.
11.39. And that's really the sum of the 10.6 and the negative 774. I don't know why. I do have a call into the Department of Finance to just make sure that I'm, you know, filling out this correctly. I haven't gotten in touch with them. But, you know, following the instructions, the way it says, the formulas populate that way. So just to go back to what I'm showing you, it's, you know, I have a negative and a positive, and they're adding them together as a negative. So it's confusing. But that is where we stand, right here, in our cash balances. The last thing I wanted to show you is just kind of the history of the ROPS and how they've looked. So starting with ROPS 2, which was last fiscal year, it shows that there was a residual property tax distribution to all taxing entities of 3.9. We got 911,000 of that. The next ROPS period was a little bit unique. 11 million was distributed. We got 2.6. The July through December 2013, we spent all the money, so there was no distribution. And this current period, there was a small distribution where we received $67,000. So on this current ROPS, if everything was approved, and we still got the same tax increment estimate that we have been getting, I estimate that the city could be eligible for a distribution of $1 million to $1.5 million for the six-month period. And we are getting a little bit more able to estimate this going forward. Things are, you know, leveling out. And so in the future, we will be able to bring you some estimates for this revenue source. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Jennifer? Just a quick clarifying question. On the items, line 108, which is the Amtrak maintenance and also the Glass House easement and parking garage maintenance, were these items that were not on previous ROPS?
Correct, they were not on previous ROPS.
And why were they not included before? Just oversight? I'll let the city attorney answer that.
Well, with respect to Glass House, the parking, that has always been maintained by the city. Because, you know, redevelopment is generally not supposed to be paying for ongoing maintenance. And so that's part of the argument as to why we believe that asset should be transferred to the city in the long-range property management plan. And then obviously, in the course of preparing that, we identified, hey, we've been paying for that, so if they're not gonna transfer to it...
It's put on the ROPS. So it can be protected.
And then the, again, the Amtrak was more of an oversight of not really having identified that we need to make those payments. In fact, we haven't really had any, received any bills, per se, from WARM on that. And so we do need to have a conversation with them on that. So the $50,000 is just sort of a, put a number out there, and hopefully that is sufficient to cover that, so.
So that hasn't been covered by the city over the last couple of years?
No, well, the agreement provide, there are certain aspects of the maintenance that staff or the city does maintain. And so I need to have a conversation with Public Works about that. That's something that the city was maintaining pieces of it, and WARM's maintaining others. So it was a little bit of a puzzle that we need to figure out as to who's paying for what on that parcel. But we wanted to put some money in this to make sure that it's there to make the required payments if need be.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, Deborah. I'm a little concerned about this differential between the DOF and our chart and our figuring. And my question is, do you feel that you'll be able to contact them and straighten this out before the oversight meeting next week?
Yes, that is my objective.
So that we can feel confident when this goes to the oversight group that we're in sync with the DOF?
Yes, yes. Last time, I think I talked to them, and it is interesting, because they're getting questions, and they don't know the answers either. And so last time, I did have a chance to actually get direction from one person at the DOF, and they told me how to present it. So I've used that same philosophy. And I will talk to somebody and make sure that that is the way they want us to fill it out again. If there's any recommended changes by them, I'll bring that to the Oversight Board, so that the final ROPS would be approved with that change. And I will bring the changes back to you at the next successor agency meeting.
So if we approve the ROPS tonight, and it goes forward to the Oversight Board, and DOF wants to make some changes, can it still move forward if they're not substantive changes?
Yes, I believe I can bring an amended ROPS to the Oversight Board on the 11th without any problem.
I'd move the resolution.
I'd second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah.
Very nice job.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
It is. Item 4.3, resolution of the City of Emeryville Successor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency, approving the Long Range Property Management Plan regarding the disposition and use of property of the former redevelopment agency.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Assembly Bill 1484 was approved June 27, 2012, as part of the budget. And it amended Assembly Bill 26, which was the Redevelopment Agency Dissolution Act. And among other things, Assembly Bill 1484 established penalties and incentives to have successor agencies comply with the audit requirements. And an incentive that's important is how it changed the process of disposing property. Previously, Assembly Bill 26 required successor agencies to dispose of property as expeditiously as possible with the intention of maximizing value. AB 1484 changed that, so property is disposed pursuant to a long-range property management plan, which you're considering tonight. And Emeryville's deadline for submitting this plan to the Department of Finance is at the end of this month. The Long Range Property Management Plan governs the method, use, and timing of disposing all of the former redevelopment agency's properties. And it has to include a number of elements. It has to include an inventory of all the properties. And this list you see here, all these points have to be covered in the plan, when it was acquired, how much it was worth when it was acquired, what is the current estimate of value, what is the purpose for which it was acquired, basic parcel data, if there's any lease or rental revenues, and a history of environmental contamination and remediation, potential for transit-oriented development, and a brief history of development proposals and activities. So it's rather a lengthy document. I'm gonna try and go through it fairly quickly. An important characteristic of the plan is that it divides properties into four basic categories, which are shown here on this table. A government-purpose use, enforceable obligation use, future development, and immediate sale. And the way that those properties are categorized affects how they're transferred to the city, what happens to them, and how the city collects revenue. So for instance, in government-use properties, and that's really examples of parks, which we have a few, and I'll be going over those, those would then be transferred to the to the city and retained by the city and operated as parks. The enforceable use obligation properties, enforceable obligation use properties are those that are subject to legally binding contracts or agreements. In that case, they're also transferred to the city and retained by the city. The future development properties are properties that were purchased for a project identified in the redevelopment plan, and they would be transferred to the city for disposition and redevelopment according to that plan. And in this case, the city would retain the revenues from the sale of the property. The last case, it is immediate sale, is property not falling into, into any of those first three categories. Uh, they, those properties would be proposed, just to sell them at their highest and best use, and that's the case where revenues are distributed to the taxing entities. So, Emeryville Successor Agency has 10 properties that are included in this plan. There's seven governmental-use properties, one, uh, for, uh, property for the enforceable obligation, one property for future development, and one for immediate sale, and I'm going to go through them. This, first, this is a map that shows the location of these properties, so you could see that they're distributed fairly evenly throughout the entire city. A lot of them, the park properties are on the Greenway, and we'll talk about that later, but you can see these are the park properties here. So, speaking of parks, five park properties, Horton Landing Park, Greenway at Parcel D, Greenway at 59th Street, Emery Station, Greenway Plaza, and 48th Street Community Garden. They'll be operated as parks. Uh, they're identified in the general plan and zoned as open space, and as I just pointed out, four of those would be incorporated into the Emeryville Greenway. So because they're all parks, they're assumed to have no commercial value. So the first park is Horton Landing Park. Uh, this site is located west of Novartis, east of Union Pacific Rail. It's, uh, about 42,500 square feet. The Redevelopment Agency acquired it in 1996 for $463,000. It's currently contaminated, and this is an aerial showing the current condition of the site, and then you see here the plan that's been approved for redevelopment as the park. The next is Greenway at Parcel D. Uh, this is located at the western terminus of Sherwin Street at Halick, east of UPRR, and it's 63,400 square feet, acquired December 2006 for 4.2 million. Uh, and its environmental condition is that it's been remediated. And in, we've seen it incorporated to, into a Thompson Endorfman 2013 site plan, which is redeveloping the Sherwins Williams site, and then this is the Parcel D site over here. Should be, in their plan, a dog park. The next property is Greenway at 59th Street. It's part of the Greenway system, located, uh, essentially between Pa, 59th and Powell Street. It's, was acquired through eminent domain in August of 2010. It's 11,780 square feet. Uh, the 500, approximately $500,000 was the fair market value at the date of the offer for acquisition, and it has been currently remediated. It's currently under construction as the Greenway up in here. Uh, WRM Development's constructing it, and then it'll be operated, owned by the city. Then the next park is Emery Station Greenway Plaza. Uh, this is a point at the northeast corner of Powell and Hollis, which is being, has been developed into sort of an entryway to the Greenway at that location. It's approximately 4,000 square feet. Uh, it's, we've, the successor agency acquired ownership through, and your evocable offer of dedication and reservation of easements, $735,000 value, and it has been remediated. The next park is the 48th Street Community Garden, which is located on 48th Street in the Triangle Neighborhood. It's planned for, to be redeveloped as a community garden, and this is a 2010 plan that was submitted with the state, when we received a state grant to, to work on that project. Acquired it in February 2008 for $261,000, and it has been remediated. So now moving on to a different type of governmental-use property, uh, community facilities. We have one property there, the Art and Cultural Center, a 30,000-square-foot, one-story unreinforced masonry brick, brick building adjacent to City Hall, purchased in 2006 for the purpose of developing an art and cultural center. And the language on the slide here shows, is from the implementation plan, showing the purpose for which it was acquired. It has been remediated. It's, uh, the general plan identifies it as a public use, and it's zoned that way. So there's no market value to the site due to the public zoning designation. And these just show you the parcel map for the site, and the most recently approved site plan, Emeryville Center for the Arts in 2011, although that approval has expired. And now, the Glass House Public Parking is another governmental-use property. That's 50 pub, public parking spaces on the ground floor of the Glass House condominium project. This was initially identified in 2005, 2009 Redevelopment Agency Implementation Plan. The Redevelopment Agency purchased the parking from Pulte Homes, who, who developed it, and it's currently provided free to the public to support, uh, local businesses. This shows the site location and the layout of the public parking, acquired in 2008 for $2 million, and it's, the site's been remediated. Next is the property to fulfill an enforceable obligation, and the property we have in that category is the Amtrak Public Parking. So we have enforceable obligations to provide 125 parking spaces for freed Amtrak patrons. And these are, this list here is a listing of the three enforceable obligations that relate to that, uh, site. So there's a 97-year sublease with Emery Station Associates for the Amtrak parking on the site, and another, uh, lease for the Amtrak station, which says that, and a sublease with the National Railroad Corporation that says that Amtrak will be provided this parking. And lastly, the June 2012 Transit Center Parking Funding and Sublease Assignment Agreement, where, between the city and the successor agency, to actually fund and build the parking structure. So you're all familiar with this site. This is the mound site, so it's just, uh, north of the Amtrak station, and this shows you the Transit Center plan, uh, for the ground floor of the Transit Center on that site. 1.58 acres, acquired in, uh, 2,000 for a dollar, and its, uh, estimated value is zero because of the free Amtrak parking, and the site is currently contaminated. So now, moving on to the properties for future development. It's, there's one property in that, a category, South Bayfront Site B, and the purpose for acquiring and developing Site B was to achieve the 1976 Redevelopment Plan and 2010-14 Implementation Plan objectives, which are listed here. Essentially, uh, to develop a commercial and residential development, to strengthen the economic and employment base of the city, provide a greater residential market, uh, address and alleviate loss of tax base and jobs. And it's clearly stated that this site needs to be a continuation of the existing Bay Street mixed-use development, and would serve as a northern cap for that project. So this is a parcel map showing the site. It's approximately three acres, consists of five parcels purchased between 2006 and 2010, uh, for 15 point, almost 16 million dollars, exclusive of the environmental costs. Estimated current value based on an August 2012 appraisal is 13.9 million, and the site has been remediated. So the last property is property for immediate sale, which is what we call the Shell Mound Street Lot. This is basically a remnant piece from early acquisitions by the Redevelopment Agency. Uh, the intent here would be to sell this piece as-is, engage a broker to sell it, all cash sale, the proceeds would be distributed to the taxing entities. The estimated worth is from, anywhere from 1 million to 2.5 million. This is a parcel map showing that property. It's 25,756 square feet. We initially acquired it, estimated to be about $515,000. It, the environmental condition, it has a deed restriction on that restricts the use to commercial office or industrial. So, basically, when the Department of Finance approves the Long Range Property Management Plan, all of the properties listed here would be placed in a community redevelopment property trust fund, and they would be disposed of according to the disposition plans appropriate to each of the uses. And, and the two revenue-generating properties, the property for future development, when that is disposed of, the city keeps all of the money from that property, Bay Street, and the property for immediate sale, the Shell Mound Street, those would be distributed, so the city would get its share of that distribution. So that concludes my report. We're recommending that you, as the successor agency, approve the long-range management plan. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Helen, I have a question for you. Refresh my memory about the property on Christie Avenue where the Public Works is now, uh, operating out of. What's the situation with that, and why isn't it on this?
That's city-owned.
Totally city-owned.
It is city-owned.
So, the Gov. can't jump in on this at all?
No, because the, the Department of Finance and the Oversight Board did not recognize, um, the, uh, either the obligation or the asset as being, or I should say, the obligation that we maintained, uh, they didn't recognize it as an enforceable obligation, that being the, the loan agreement between, uh, the successor agency and the former owners. So, um, and that would be the loan trust, and I forget the other name of the trust. And so what happened...
There's no chance that the DOF can come back and take another bite?
No, so they haven't, they did not recognize it as, uh, an enforceable obligation or asset of the successor agency, and so as part of the due diligence review for the Low Mod Housing Fund, um, they required that 1.5 million, uh, be repaid to the successor agency, uh, because that was the amount of the down payment that the Redevelopment Agency had made on the purchase of that. So, the city funded that, and then likewise, there have been two payments due to the property owners, the, the former property owners, I should say, and the city has made those payments. So all of the, um, all the, you know, funding for the acquisition of that has come from the city. The Department of Finance has not recognized that obligation or that as an asset of the successor agency, so it's, you know, and it, the title was in the name of the city, so it's a city asset, and so it's not on here.
So at the present time, are, are we making plans to move forward with some kind of development there?
Well, we're going to be bringing that, uh, to a study session to get direction from the City Council about what, what you want to see happen on the site.
Okay. Other questions from Council?
Yeah, I have a couple other questions. When you talked about the last, um, the 10th parcel, which is the Shell Mound Street Lot, um, you taught, you said that $515,000 was what we paid for that, and I'm curious if that amount covered the larger parcel. I see a, a larger outline here, and I'm not sure how the parcel was originally defined. I know that the red outline section is what remains after part was given to Caltrans for Wayne 80, someone's to B Street. So the original outline are the gray, kind of somewhat trapezoidal shape. Is that what cost 515,000?
No.
No.
No, the red, the red outline piece is the portion, the 515,000 is attributable to that portion.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I, what I did is I took the total purchase price that we paid, and then, uh, came up with per-square-foot, uh, price, and then applied that to the remaining, and came up with 515,000.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed, I wasn't able to do all the calculations myself so quickly, but the per-square-foot price varied wildly, it seemed, from parcel to parcel throughout the city. Um, that would be an interesting exercise sometime to...
Also, given the time, so you're looking at about maybe 20 bucks a square foot there, and whereas Site B, when we were acquiring Site B, we were up in the range of 130 square foot, so...
Okay, thank you. Um, and then there were two other, uh, sites that did not have any money amount associated with it, and one was the Art and Cultural Center. Um, it said there's no value because of the way it's zoned, but what was paid for it was not, um, given to us, and, on the slide.
Oh, okay.
Do you know what that is, or if there's an amount associated with that?
I think it's 2.1 million?
But that's just...
I feel like it was somewhere in all of the pages I read, but I...
2.65. It's on, uh...
Okay.
Page 45 of the Property Management Plan, which is 178 in your packet.
Okay.
But it's 3,650,000.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. And then, um, the second one with no value was the Amtrak Public Parking, 125 spaces, and, um, I understand that it's of no value because we have to provide this, and it's, it's only good for that purpose. But again, isn't there some value that could be attributed if the Glass House, 50 spaces, for example, was said to be, um, valued at $2 million? Why is it that we don't have a value at all associated with Amtrak?
Well, it was purchased for a dollar, so...
Okay.
You know, basically, we were buying...
That's not a market-based value, though.
Well, in that it's just a surface parking lot, and that it's provided free to Amtrak. So, the Glass House parking is a structured parking lot that you're buying, so it's a lot more expensive.
Yeah, but $1 still, it doesn't capture the market.
Well, there's no market value because there's no revenue. It's all free parking, and so if there's no revenue, there's no value to it.
But the land still has some value, does it not?
The $1 relates to what we paid for that interest.
I just thought each parcel was supposed to have some value. You know, it says estimated current value for this one. This one's for immediate sale, so I understand it has to do with the market conditions.
The value of land is associated with the amount of revenue it can generate. So if it can't generate any revenue, it's not worth anything. Same with the parks. Parks have zero value. They don't generate any revenue.
Plus, you couldn't sell that property because of the, um, the toxic waste that's there. No one, you can't, you can't get funding for it.
Okay, let me put it another way. Those 125 spaces are going to cost something to build in a structured lot. Is there a value associated with that, with the cost of that parking?
Yeah, but that's, that's not what you're valuing here.
Okay.
Because that's not what, the, the interest that we're looking at is this sublease interest for 125 spaces, and it's, and you're, all you, the only thing that you obtain out of that is the right for surface parking. So you can't assume that anything's going to be done with it in terms of its valuation right now, because all that exists right now under that sublease is the right to 125 surface parking spaces.
Mm-hmm. But it takes land to provide that, and land is worth something.
Right, and you're, you were looking at the $1, and that's essentially what we paid when we, uh, acquired that interest in that sublease back in 2000. And then going forward in terms of what is it, if we were trying to sell that on the open market, given its restrictions and given the conditions of the site, uh, our belief is that it doesn't have any value from a, from a market standpoint, because you have this obligation to maintain it, and also an obligation to provide that parking to, to the Amtrak patrons, because it's, it's subject to those, those obligations.
I see your point. I, I guess I still think that 125 parking spaces should have some value, even if there's not revenue, and there's, I mean, I know what it costs to build a surface parking lot, and it's more than nothing, so I guess you're saying there's, there's no, I, I just thought that the purpose of this exercise was to assign some kind of a value, and you're saying it has no value because of the obligations to provide it free of...
Right. What is the current mark? If you were trying to sell this on the market, what would you get for it?
Okay.
Our, our belief that, given the restrictions that are placed on it, the, on the spaces, is that there isn't, uh, a market for it.
But if they were gone, it would cost quite a bit to provide that.
But that's not what you're buying.
But that's not what you're asking for.
What you're buying is this, this sublease interest, and you have these obligations to provide it to Amtrak, and, so...
It does cost us something, as we saw earlier with the maintenance agreement.
It does. And so perhaps that's why...
It's a negative value.
Right.
Well, I mean, the, the spaces are essentially made available to, to Amtrak, to the extent they aren't utilized by Amtrak, then they can be utilized by members of the public. So to the extent there is any sort of revenue, it's probably just sufficient to offset what your, your, um, maintenance expenses associated with it.
Okay. Does that mean we're getting that revenue, or that's, we're not getting that revenue?
Apparently, no, we're, we're not getting the revenue and we're not maintaining it.
Okay. That's where, that's, that has the contract. Okay, thank you.
Helen, have any other successor agencies already submitted their long-range property management plan? And how has that process gone in terms of what has DOF responded with?
Well, I know a number have submitted them. You probably know more of the current situation.
I'm trying to remember. I just saw, there was an email the other day. Only a handful have been approved. There have been numbers that have been submitted. I know, City Manager and I were talking the other day about, the City of Oakland, they had submitted theirs in July, and they still haven't heard anything back.
Oh, okay.
Oh, boy.
So, there you have it.
All right, thank you. We have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment at this time?
Move the resolution.
I have one last question that I forgot to ask.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I'm sorry, Helen. On Site B, where it mentioned the different activities that I think were, as part of the economic development, I recall reading about affordable housing being called out specifically, and I didn't see that in your presentation, and I wondered if there was, maybe that was just a general statement from the implementation plan, or if, I can't remember the origin of it exactly. I've read a lot of pages, but-
I can respond to that.
Can you respond to that? Thanks.
So, one of the obligations with respect to South Bayfront Site B and, and any parcel that a redevelopment, or I should say, a, a city receives from a successor agency for future development, is an obligation that when it disposes of that parcel to a developer, that it has to make certain findings regarding, I forget the correct term, but if I can find My apologies. Yeah, that there's, will assist in the creation of economic opportunity. So, this is a new provision that was enacted by Assembly Bill 470, and it went into effect January this year. And economic opportunity is defined in the government code, and it provides that includes projects that create affordable housing are included in a sustainable community strategy in accordance with Senate Bill 375, or a transit priority project as defined in the Public Resources Code. So, those are three sort of ways by which you can make a finding that this project will assist in creation of economic opportunity. There are some others as well in the statute that I didn't lay out, but those were three that just sort of played out. And so, to the extent the project provides for affordable housing, you will be able to make that finding of, that the site's providing economic opportunity. Likewise, the, with respect to sustainable community strategy, the whole city, you know, essentially, the entire city is in a priority development area, and that's sort of forming the basis of the sustainable community strategy. And then, likewise, with respect to it being a transit priority project, you have to be within a certain distance of a, of a transit stop, and certainly, the Amtrak station qualifies. So, the point I was making in, in the report was that what is planned to be developed on that site, in terms of what was anticipated in the redevelopment plan, what's in the implementation plan, what is also allowed for in our current general plan and zoning, is all entirely consistent with being able to make those findings. So, I think we're, as I say, the zoning and the general plan is conducive to be able to make those findings that are now required.
Okay, and I have one last follow-up, I'm sorry, on that, that I noticed, and this is something I've come across in my day job, which is the major transit hub, which you mentioned. The definition, it says in our packet, a quarter-mile radius or a 10-minute walk. And I had a hunch that maybe it should be a half-mile radius and a 10-minute walk, but that may be something, where else is defined?
Where are you reading, half-mile?
I'm looking on page 34 of 92, but I saw it in three different places. So, maybe that's a minor detail, but I wasn't sure that, generally, the 10-minute walk is associated with a half-mile and a five-minute walk is associated with a quarter-mile?
Yeah, that, well, that's coming out of-
It may have come from another document.
Coming out of our general plan, so maybe Charlie can speak to that as to whether-
Or I could follow up on it later, too.
Yeah, yeah. But I believe the, as defined in the Public Resources Code is what constitutes, I believe it's a half-mile.
Okay. I think it's a half-mile as well.
Okay.
All right, thanks. I'm done.
I have a question about that infamous hole in the ground in Christie that PPP has been looking at for years. That's not-
That's a housing site.
Okay.
So, the housing sites were transferred to the city already.
Got it, okay.
Affordable housing site.
Yeah.
Okay, so Nora moved the item.
Second and two.
Kurt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just clarify that you were moving the plan? I had provided some, some revisions to the plan.
With the revisions.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bill, would you like all this paper now?
Make paper airplanes.
Okay, and with that, that meeting is adjourned.
Wait, there's no legal expenditures, or?
We haven't had a meeting. That'll be next Tuesday, the Oversight Board will meet. So, now we're on to the green agenda. This is the Emeryville City Council regular meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a special order of the day, the Friends of the Estuary presentation. Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you. When I was lucky enough to attend the Alameda County Mayor's presentation, what month was that? Was it October, October? We heard a presentation from the Friends of the Estuary, and I thought it was something that everyone on the Council and Emeryville should hear, because I think it impacts us directly as a city that touches the Bay. And I can only think that there must be an update now with the state of our climate and the drought that we're in, in right now. And I'm hoping to hear from Friends of the Estuary about this critical issue and how it impacts us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Asher, and thank you very much for the invitation, Councilmember West, to speak to you tonight. My name is Darcy Luce, and I'm with Friends of the San Francisco Estuary, and I will be talking to you about drought, freshwater flows, and the future of the San Francisco Estuary, or standing up for the Bay. A little bit of background on Friends. We were founded in 1993 to help implement the comprehensive conservation management plan for the San Francisco Estuary, which is the master blueprint for restoring and protecting the Delta and the Bay. We're one of the only nonprofits that is focused on the entire, excuse me, estuary, and we primarily run outreach and education programs. Bless you. So, right now, California's unprecedented drought is highlighting the shortcomings in our water supply infrastructure and is providing us a snapshot of what will happen with increasing frequency in the future. We're all very aware of the current water supply challenges around the state, but for those of us in the Bay, there's another side of this issue that I'm here to talk about today that is obvious but just as urgent. And that is the chronic, artificial, and long-term drought that our water supply system has created here in the Bay. With the talk of Sierra snowpack, I know we are much more very cognizant of our source of water, but I'll just go over this very quickly. So, the, all of the freshwater that comes into the Bay comes from, or vast majority of it, comes from the very large Sacramento and San Joaquin River Delta watershed. It's about, drains about 40% of California's land and primarily comes from two large rivers, the Sacramento River, and if I press this, I don't know if you'll be able to see that on your screens, but the Sacramento River and the San Joaquin River from the south and the Sacramento River from the north. The Sacramento River is about 80 to 85% of the flow, and the San Joaquin River is about 15 to 20%, with some smaller tributaries making up the balance. These rivers drain naturally into the Delta and then into the Bay and then to the Pacific Ocean. But over the years, we've, of course, engineered a very vast and complicated water delivery system that now shuttles this water all over central and southern California to provide a portion of the water supply for over 25 million Californians, including Emeryville. And, oops, that is just the inset there of the whole Delta, Bay Delta estuary, including the source of the East Bay Muds water supply, the McCollum River, which is then taken through the Delta and to the service area here. Of course, we are doing much better than many parts of the state, as the East Bay Muds reservoirs are about 2/3 full. But we're very painful, painfully aware that there are inherent problems in this large water supply infrastructure. And one of those problems is actually how much freshwater gets to the estuary after we take water out of it for our uses. So, essentially, we have created a chronic and artificial drought. So, when I talk about the estuary, I am really talking about the Bay Delta estuary. It includes everything you see here in, on this picture. It includes the Delta, the Sassoon Bay, San Pablo Bay, and what's what we call San Francisco Bay. That is all one system. It's an estuary that is the largest on the west coast of the North and South Americas, and it's one of the world's most productive and delicate ecosystems. Saltwater from the Pacific Ocean mixes with freshwater from the Sacramento and San Joaquin Rivers to create unique habitats and a productive nursery for many plant and animal species. 2/3 of the state's salmon pass through the Bay, and nearly one-half of the Pacific Coast waterfowl and shorebirds depend on the Bay for sustenance during migration along the Pacific Flyway. So, in the Bay Area, we tend to think of the Delta as a separate place, but because the Bay Delta is all one system, what happens to freshwater in the Delta and in the upper watersheds of the Sacramento and San Joaquin Rivers affects the health of the Bay and the economic and environmental well-being of those of us who live here. So, the planning processes that I'll be talking about this evening that are going on in the Delta and for California's water supply do affect us in the Bay, and it's very important that we take a role in these planning processes. What's the problem? The problem is that too much freshwater is being taken out of the system with and without droughts. So much water, in fact, was taken out of the San Joaquin River up until recently that it used to go completely dry over long stretches. And the picture on the left is a picture that I used to say, well, we would never see this again. This is something that we used to do before we realized, you know, that this had massive impacts on endangered species, on salmon. We used to dry up the, a vast majority of one of the largest rivers in California. However, there is legislation that's currently proposed in the House that would bring us back to the state again. So, it's not unheard of. There are, some of our folks in Central Valley legislators would be willing to dry out the river. California is taking, on average, more than half of the total freshwater that would naturally come into the Bay Delta estuary, and our water supply system has created this, this drought, this artificial drought in the estuary, which has actually become worse in the last decade, because for the past 10 years, we've been taking more water than ever before. What's the, what's the significance of this chronic drought to us in the Bay? Why, why does this even matter, really? I keep pressing the wrong thing. What's at stake? We need this water here for a healthy and resilient Bay. Freshwater plays an essential role in our economic and environmental well-being, from water quality and wildlife to tourism, jobs, recreation, and an overall quality of life. Some of the impacts of reduced freshwater flow. We've seen declines in a broad range of fish and aquatic species, including the listing of six native fish species as endangered or threatened in the last 20 years. We're seeing the disruption of the entire aquatic food web, particularly as non-native species like the Asian clam here, take advantage of changed conditions and completely monopolize their environment. We're seeing shifts in, and reduction in habitat, but most important for Emeryville is probably the reduced resilience to climate change and sea level rise. The Emeryville mudflats, or tidal marshes, are an important source of protection against sea level rise, and they function as a sort of horizontal levee, if you've heard that term before. Reduced freshwater flows may leave those marshes vulnerable to erosion or inundation due to reductions in suspended sediment loads and habitat. Another impact is water quality decline and increased pollution. With, without those pulses of freshwater flows, without those large winter storms, which, of course, we have not seen this year, pollutants and contaminants like pharmaceuticals sit around longer, and we can also possibly see an increase in toxic algae blooms. The artificial drought also exacerbates the concentration of pesticides, fertilizers, treated wastewater, and salt, meaning that we've even created a problem for some of our neighbors who take their drinking water from the Delta, which has become saltier. It also means lost jobs. Hmm, okay, well, we're missing a slide. But it means lost jobs and income. The Chinook salmon declined so rapidly in 2008 and 2009 that the fishery had to be completely shut down, and that led to a loss of 1.4 billion in economic revenues and 23,000 jobs lost. The Bay is a world-class destination, and it's a valuable asset for businesses, residents, and tourists. Tourism alone brings in $9 billion in economic revenues to the Bay Area, and tourists and residents use the Bay for recreational fishing, boating, bird and wildlife watching, and to enjoy its natural beauty. It also means loss of a quality of life, because for us, San Francisco Bay is a treasured symbol of this region. And in a 2010 survey, 92% of Bay Area residents agree that it is important to have a clean, healthy, and vibrant San Francisco Bay. And without freshwater flows, we've disrupted the balance, and we are in danger of losing that. So, what can be done about this, particularly when we are in the middle of a drought? Well, we need to stand up for the Bay, because the water planning processes that are underway are tending to ignore the importance of the Bay and the connectivity of the Bay to the Delta as we go through these processes. So, I'll just touch on a few of these here. Number one, the State Water Resources Control Board's Bay Delta Water Quality Plan update will set a standard for how much water is allowed to flow into the Bay and how much water goes to all other uses. So, the board must consider all beneficial uses, including fish, wildlife, agricultural, industrial, urban, and residential uses, and they must try to find a balance between all of those. So, I wish them luck. Sounds like a tough job. But they tend to think along the lines of how to spread out the pain equally, and they don't always hear from the Bay that freshwater is important. They're hearing a lot from agriculture, and they're hearing a lot from the Delta, but they don't hear very much from the Bay. BDCP, or the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, also known as the Twin Tunnels, has two goals of increasing water supply reliability and recovery of endangered fish species, including salmon and Delta smelt. It includes construction of twin tunnels under the Delta, but it does not increase freshwater flows to the San Francisco estuary. Instead, it maintains the large exports that we've seen in the past decade. So, it perpetuates this reduced freshwater flows problem as it stands now. It also doesn't include an analysis of impacts to the San Francisco Bay, and you can see in this map here that the plan area ends approximately at Carquina's Bridge, which means that they have not looked at any kind of impacts to the San Francisco Bay of this massive infrastructure project. And we need to know how this plan might impact the Bay, and we need to demand an analysis. The California Water Action Plan was produced by CDFI, Cal EPA, and the California Natural Resources Agency, and it's a suite of comprehensive solutions to, to California's water plan problem, from increasing storage to encouraging additional conservation and efficiency to improving flood protection. And it sounds great, but so far, it's just a list of goals. So, we need to see more specific commitments come out of that, and those should be encouraged. Some of those goals are represented here, and, and the point that we'd like to make is that a drought-proof water supply is available. We don't necessarily need to maintain this reliance on this water that should be coming into the Bay from the Delta. Some of these solutions could be pursued very aggressively. The 2013 updates to the California Water Plan, which is different from the California Water Action Plan, by the Department of Water Resources, has identified a possible savings of 5.4 million acre feet through urban water use efficiency and recycled water alone. That doesn't even include agricultural water use efficiency or any other strategies that we could be pursuing. And 1 acre foot is approximately enough for a family of four for one year. So, 5.4 million acre feet is about the same amount that's being proposed by the Twin Tunnels. So, through this kind of approach to water supply, we could really establish a much more reliable water supply than Mother Nature is currently providing us. For example, Los Angeles' population has grown by 5 million people in the past 20 years, but the amount of water that they use has not changed, because once these- Because once these conservation elements are established and become routine, people tend to just maintain them. So they are actually very reliable.
That's impressive.
So what are we doing? We, Friends of the San Francisco Estuary, is working to increase awareness and action in the Bay and in the Delta by meeting with county mayors, city mayors, and city councils, county supervisors, and legislators. We'll also be holding a conference later this year for Bay Delta elected officials on fresh water flows and current planning processes. And the reason that I'm here tonight is we're working with cities and counties to pass resolutions modeled on the Association of Bay Area Governments Resolution in 2012 on ecosystem health and the need for fresh water for the San Francisco Bay Delta estuary. We've been working our way around the Bay primarily, and we've passed resolutions in Marin County and Napa County, and Contra Costa County has also passed a resolution. And just a few weeks ago, the Marin Municipal Water District passed a resolution that supported the one passed by Marin County. So we're very happy with the progress that's being made. There's certainly a lot of interest in this issue and look to Emeryville to also take a stand. The Bay needs you. There are actions to be taken, certainly at the state level and at the regional level. But the problem that we see is that there are these planning processes underway. The Bay is often overlooked. The Delta is very much an area of focus, but because we are downstream, we will get affected. And there are people out there who say things like, and I'm going to quote State Senator Andy Vedak on January 30th, saying, "It's a crying shame to let precious water wash out to sea." Well, that fresh water that he's referring to, that's not used by humans, is what comes to us before it gets to the Pacific Ocean. And it's what we're relying on to keep that vital mix of fresh and salt water in balance. So that's why it's absolutely essential that Bay cities and counties speak up in these planning processes to clarify this situation and stand up for the Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
When you speak of the Twin Tunnels, is that the same thing as the peripheral canal that we hear of? Or is it different?
The peripheral canal was, I think, in the 80s. And this is sort of what's been called the peripheral canal revisited, but it is very different. And it should be noted that that is very different. That was a massive, I think it was 22,000 cubic feet per second diversion that was proposed. These are two tunnels that, at the moment, are proposed at 9,000 cubic feet per second. So they're much smaller. They'd have a significant change to the hydrology of the Delta because instead of taking, and I'd have to go back quite a ways, but instead of taking, here, from the southern part of the Delta, which tends to suck, as I mentioned, all the Sacramento River has most of the flow. So when you have all the pumps located down in the south, you end up sucking all of that flow through the Delta and backwards to the South Delta pumps. And that is a significant problem. That's our current water infrastructure. We have South Delta pumps that cause the river to run backwards because it's so powerful. This would propose to put new tunnels, new intakes in the North Delta near Sacramento. And that is more in line with the natural hydrology because it does capitalize on the greater flows from Sacramento. That's a good thing because it does have less risk for fish getting sucked into the pumps. That's in theory, but in practice, there's a lot of steps to be made before we get to a win-win situation. And from Friends' perspective and from the Bay's perspective, that needs to include releasing more water.
And then can I ask about, there's been talk about a water bond. There was one a couple of years ago that was taken off or was not put on the ballot. And there's been talk, I don't know what the latest is on that or what your position is on that.
Thank you. Yeah, the water bond is changing daily. I had heard, so there are two different bond measures being proposed. One is by Senator Lois Walk, and the other is by Assembly Member Anthony Rendon. They both have different components, but they provide for a certain amount of, I guess the primary breakdown between the two of them is that Walk does not provide for additional storage and Rendon's does. And this would be, you know, raising reservoir, raising dams for increased reservoir size and that type of thing. So storage is a very big topic right now. And Friends, our position on storage is, we don't have a position. We emphasize the importance of groundwater storage and conjunctive use of groundwater banking because there is so much depleted groundwater in California that that really is an opportunity that we think needs to be capitalized on first before looking at raising dams, since raising dams has an impact upstream, often to very wild areas and recreation areas. So that's our position, but I know that there's a really large push for storage from the water agencies and from the governor. So whose proposal will win out might hinge on that. That is also, there have been different numbers passed around on those amounts. They've ranged, I think, from six-something billion to 10 billion. And ACWA, the Association of California Water Agencies, is also proposing a water bond version that is 10 billion and includes storage and other measures, including regional water management plans and restoration and assistance for low-income communities.
I just want to thank you for your passion and dedication in coming here tonight to educate us and the public who might be watching on TV about the estuary. It's a very complicated and delicate ecosystem. So I just want to thank you for coming. And I don't know if, you're kind of talking about what, around some things that your group would like to advocate for. I was wondering if you have a position on desalinization plants?
That's a tricky one. Dsal is, technology is changing very rapidly, and I think it is the type of thing that is, could be regionally appropriate in some locations. For the Bay Area specifically, I would not be able to say, but I've certainly heard that there are successful implementations of Dsal in Australia. You can't necessarily compare Australia to California. There are some similarities, but some pretty significant differences. Dsal has, it's been a very expensive way to go, but I've heard that those costs have been dropping. So it's such a rapidly changing technology that we tend to stay away from it. It's been a very big environmental, had a very high environmental cost. We prefer to look at some of the other strategies first.
One of the questions that I have is, how far up the Delta does the salt water go?
Right now?
Yeah.
There is something called X2, which is a legally mandated or regulated salinity level that is managed. So it needs to be, I don't think that I could, maybe I could show you. It needs to vary from, in this area right here, between Chips Island and, I think, an area called, well, I'm getting into areas, I hesitate to give you the actual geographic range without being sure of myself.
The Martinez Aniok area?
Yeah, so Aniok gets its water from the Delta. That's one example of an impact that is happening as a result of these reduced fresh water flows. X2 is supposed to manage for that type of thing, but that can be moved with enough political pressure upstream, which has the effect of making everything downstream saltier. X2 means two parts per thousand, and it's a level of salinity that's been defined as being biologically significant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm hoping that the council might entertain a resolution in the future to support that ABA passed in 2012, based on the information we got tonight. And if so, could we, I move to direct our staff to bring that forward.
I should, sorry, I should just mention that I left packets for each of you that include the resolution, all of the resolutions that have been passed to date for your future reference.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now on to public comment this evening. I'm here from the public.
Hi, Sharon Wilshire. I just have a question about process. And in the successor agency agenda, there were at least two things that were, had been, or maybe reports had been revised from what was in the packet. And where, so I presume that those weren't online, or maybe they were. And if they, are they, well, no, what I wanted to find out really was that when those things happen, and it can happen on any agenda, then are those archivally on old agendas? Or how does the public, if you're not watching tonight, know that, I mean, these might have been very insignificant changes, but the things might have been changed from what they would have gone to the website for? So that's...
Right. The, I know, excuse me, I know that the changes that, so one, I brought red line for people here, so you're more than welcome to take a copy so you can see the changes to the two items. And I know that the, you can hit it better than I. I'm pretty certain that the changes that were made to the funding agreement, which was the item that I spoke on, that, I'm pretty certain that Tom uploaded those changes already. And so those should be on the, on the city's website already, if you go there to look for that item.
Okay.
The management plan item, the changes, those have not been uploaded, although the changes that are in, that I showed here, they have been made to the, if you want to go look at the same item that's being presented to the Oversight Board, those changes that you'll see here are reflected in what has been given to the Oversight Board.
So there, I guess, yeah, I mean, to me, it's more not specifically for tonight, but just in general. So it sounds as if, yes, that there is, if there's time or there's whatever.
There is a process by which you can make amendments to the packet, and it kind of, the program essentially updates the whole thing. And so when we do get things, you know, that get, something is caught or something is added or some information, there's just new information that came, the City Clerk's Office updates the agenda packet, so the newest is part of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question, actually. And so if the council changes an item, let's say, you know, three meetings ago, we changed an item. When someone goes back and looks at the agenda for the meeting in December, would it reflect what was first posted, or would it reflect the changes the council made?
That would be reflected in the minutes.
So they would have to look at that first agenda, and then they have to go to the next agenda where the minutes are and put the two together.
Right, because what is, the packet is the, is what, information, sorry.
Your time's up, sorry.
Move on.
The packet represents the information that the city council used to make its decision. The minutes is what the, it captures what the action was. So you wouldn't put a different action in the packet because it's after the fact, so to speak.
I know. I just wonder if there's any other way that that's handled. I know we've, you know, we do the best that we can, but it doesn't make it easy for the public to necessarily, I know that we've had, for example, an agency that the minutes were a year later. And that's a problem. I think we've probably remedied that, but it's hard sometimes to track if you're trying to get the best information.
I would suggest that if the public wants to know the actions that the council takes, then it's the minutes that you would look at. If you want to kind of have kind of background information, then that would be captured in the agenda packet that went to the council.
Certainly, if there were changes made to a resolution or a contract or ordinance would have, you're going to see that in the final version that becomes part of the official record, so.
And where is that found, though? That's not on the council.
That is not on the website, as far as I know right now, but I think we're in the process. Correct me.
Through our electric records management system, we're in the process of scanning all the old agenda packets, and then we'll be separately scanning all the resolutions, and that will be available.
Great, and searchable by keywords.
Yes.
That's great.
Oh, wow, good.
Thank you.
The council provided money in the last interim for that to happen.
Yeah, you've done the work. I appreciate it.
It works, thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? No? Okay, city manager's report?
I don't have any.
Nothing? Okay.
Move the consent calendar.
I do want to note that item 5.5 has been pulled from the consent calendar, but we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We're on to item 8.1, which was in conjunction with the successor agency agenda, item 4.1. This is the...
Move the resolution.
And, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 8.1. And now on to 8.2, the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement between the City of Emeryville and Emery Station Associates regarding the Emery Station West at the Emeryville Transit Center Heritage Square Garage Project.
Move the second reading.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Councilmember Brinkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West?
No.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Asher?
No.
Okay. On to communications and reports, department heads. Charlie?
Yes, I'm here to report to you on what the City Planning Commission did at their last meeting on January 23rd. As listed on your agenda, they had three items to consider. One was some new signage for the public market, which they did approve. That item is appealable to the City Council. The deadline, as always, is 15 days after the Planning Commission's action, and that would work out to this coming Friday, February 7th. So far, it has not been appealed. If the City Council wishes to appeal this item to yourselves, this would be the time to take up that motion. The next item was an amendment to the planning regulations related to emergency shelters, supportive housing, and transitional housing. This is really sort of a cleanup measure. We found some internal inconsistencies that needed to be fixed, and we found that state law requires us to have a zone in which emergency shelters are permitted by right, and we do have that. However, we have no standards for emergency shelters, so that any emergency shelter that proposal that came to us in that zone, we would basically just have to approve without any way to evaluate it. So what this ordinance does is it adds standards for those by-right emergency shelters. This ordinance will be coming to you for first reading on tentatively March 4th. And then the final item was the proposed hotel at Bay Street, the Hyatt Place Hotel. The Planning Commission held a study session on that and gave the developer lots of feedback on the design. That will be coming back to the Planning Commission for a decision at a future meeting, probably March or April. That concludes my report on the Planning Commission meeting. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have on that. If not, I do have another announcement. I just want to let you know, you should have received an email from me this morning with a flyer about this. A community meeting has been scheduled for the proposed Marketplace Redevelopment Project Phase 1B, which involves the realignment of Shellman Street and a new parking garage and retail uses and a grocery store. That community meeting will be on Thursday, February 20th at 6:30 PM, and it will be held at the Hyatt House Hotel.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, on to item 10.2.
Excuse me, Mayor. I had, over here, I had one brief announcement regarding the city's capital improvement program budget. We've released a packet to the advisory committees, listing out our proposed projects with a lot of detail. And those packets, I think, have been distributed to the city council members. There was a meeting on Monday evening for the Bike and Ped Committee. There's another meeting tomorrow for the Economic Development Committee. And throughout the month, all the advisory committees will have the opportunity to discuss the projects that we're proposing. And we've scheduled a special community meeting on Saturday, March 1st, starting at 10:00 AM, to allow the community to come and provide us with additional feedback.
Where will that be, Deborah?
It will be here at City Hall.
And tomorrow, the packet should be available on the city's website under News Center. And it'll link also to a list of all the opportunities where the community can come and listen and participate in the discussion, including all the advisory body meetings, as well as the community meeting. And we'll also feature that in the E-News that will be released next week.
Anyone else? Anyone else? No? Department heads? Okay, on to 10.2, council members. 10.21, resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville supporting commercial property tax reform. We heard earlier during the public comment period from a representative, a representative from Evolve regarding this. And just to kind of provide a little bit more context, this is in order to close the loophole and reform Prop 13. And as the gentleman suggested, when Prop 13 was passed in 1978, it was done in order to protect homeowners, to allow them to stay into their, stay in their homes amid escalating property taxes. But what we've seen over the last 36 years is that the property tax burden has been shifted to individual homeowners and corporations, which generally have staffs that are able to help them with their tax burdens, are not paying as much as they were. And home and apartment owners now shoulder 72% of the property tax burden in California, whereas commercial property only accounts for 28%. So, there's a movement afoot in order to reform Prop 13. And I want to say that I'm someone who's been in California and gone to California public schools since I was in kindergarten, right before Prop 13 got passed. And my children now attend public school in the state of California and I can say that things have changed and it is not for the better. We do not have enough funding for our schools and we used to be a model for public education in the United States and we, we simply can't continue on this route. Something has to change and this is a place to start with the split role.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, there we go. Thank you. Okay, and item 10, 2.2, resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville in support of dedicating the state's cap and trade proceeds to support investment in transit-oriented projects and programs. Jennifer?
Yeah, this is something that's come to my attention, that, you know, at, at the state level, there is a, a large revenue that will be generated by the cap and trade auctions that started this past year and will grow to include transportation elements over the next few years as well. And this is a resolution that cities are considering to help send guidance to Sacramento about how the cap and trade funds could be used in our communities to help assist affordable housing options in transit-oriented areas and kind of replacing or directing, I guess, those funds towards where our redevelopment funds really have diminished. And I think the key here is that building new housing is not equal in every location, that if you build new housing near transit and if 50%, even of our new housing that we will be building over our sustainable community strategies time period, our Plan Bay Area time period, if 50% of that housing is built within that half-mile distance of transit, we will actively reduce our greenhouse gas emissions even as our population grows. And so, the other kind of flip problem to that is that as we build housing near transit, the property values go up and actually there's a displacement effect of lower-income residents. Not surprisingly, lower-income residents use transit much at a much greater rate than higher-income residents who tend to keep their cars for convenience and other, other reasons. And so, if, if the displacement happens near transit, we will actually, could see a reduced, a reduced level of transit ridership because the lower-income residents are not able to use the, or access the transit. Their houses will be, they'll be moved to other locations farther away. So, this is kind of chiming in and trying to make sure that cap and trade funds are used in a smart way that actually is in step with reducing our greenhouse gas emissions as well. This is part of our climate action plan here in town and it's also an equity solution for those who want to be able to afford to live near transit as well. So, I would hope that the rest of the council would support this. And with that, I'll move that resolution.
Second.
So, I want to discuss this item because there's a lot of pressures on cap and trade money that would help further reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And from what I understand, correct me if I'm inaccurate in my understanding of what you want, you want, you want to support building housing with this cap and trade money, right?
That some of the money would go towards, yes, the affordable housing near transit. Exactly.
Okay, so, one of the, one of the things that is going to be available to the Transportation Commission is cap and trade money. So, obviously, that's going to go for transit, not just housing. So, I'm a little concerned because when you directly support transit investments, you're directly supporting getting cars off the road and there's a much more direct correlation with the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So, not to have anything here around transportation and public transit, just seems to be trying to grab too, too much from one that isn't, there is, there is a correlation in terms of what you're proposing, but there's not a nexus. A direct nexus in reducing greenhouse gas emissions is in transportation. Transportation in Alameda County is 40% of our greenhouse gas emissions. And so, it seems to me we need to be directly supporting public transportation options.
Yeah, I actually agree with you entirely and I don't, maybe I didn't read this carefully, but I don't think that we're trying to take all of the cap and trade money and put it towards affordable housing near transit. I think we just want to be sure that some of the cap and trade money could be put towards affordable housing. What I've heard at MTC and our regional transportation decision makers is that they say, we're not in the housing business and we're not going to consider using the funds that come to the region for transportation to go towards creating affordable housing near transit. And I think actually the two have to go hand in hand, that if you put all the money towards transit and have this displacement effect of the areas around transit, you're not going to see the gains that you could see. So, I think what you're saying about a nexus makes a lot of sense, Ruth, in that you need both to happen. Maybe this resolution is not specific enough to make that clear and if so, I apologize, but I'd be happy to add something that, that doesn't preclude money being spent towards transit because I think that's an important piece of the puzzle.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the resolution, the, the resolved part of, of your resolution. It says that include investment in transit-oriented projects and programs such as transit capital and operations. So, that's the first thing there. It's not even housing. And then including student transit pass programs and last mile alternative and then, so there's a, there's a list of things and so, I mean, that's why-
Just about inclusivity and I think it's, it's saying, don't forget the other piece, which is the affordable housing near transit as well.
Yeah, so that's a list and you're not asking for particular, I think, a percentage is-
Very specific.
So, so, yeah, I think that's fine as is, but I just wanted to put that out, that it's not just building buildings that, like, say, are energy efficient or low income. It's like, we're in a more, more bang for our buck, I think, is spent on, on supporting transit.
Right. I agree and thank you for raising that.
Yeah. Call the question.
Motion? A motion?
Yeah, I moved that and Nora seconded it, I believe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmembers reporting on meetings attended.
Wait, I want the other one. It's not a meeting, but I, I asked that council, council have the Alameda CTC report because there's some good news from there. So, this was added on your, on your dais, which is that what's really unusual is that the CTC got AAA ratings from both Fitch and Standard and Poor's for the Measure B sales tax bonds. So-
That's good news.
It's the first transportation agency of its kind in California with this top credit rating. So, it bodes well for the bond issuance that's going to be moving forward from there. And also, the, the transportation expenditure plan, which we've talked some about already, was also approved to move forward for the ballot in, in November.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else reporting on meetings attended?
Well, I actually went to the mayor's conference, the mayor of San Francisco and Oakland, and that was very interesting. And one of the main drivers there was housing because San Francisco has some major issues with housing.
Yeah.
And Oakland also has some major issues, but it appears they found a couple billion dollars to build housing at the, well, actually, it's at where the Raiders are, at the stadium there, and Oak 29th is what they used to call it. So, they, they supposedly have billions of dollars for that, but also the, the big push is on the Port of Oakland to expand that. So, we know that we have to keep our eyes open because we have to keep our, the amount of noise down going through Emeryville. So, I mean, that's, the amount of trains are going to be substantially more than what currently is, is going through our, our fair city. But the, the good part of that is that the trucks will be down, but the trains will be up. So, also, what, what you're going to be seeing is the, the rents in San Francisco office buildings run $57 a square foot, upwards of $101 a square foot at 555 California. So, there's going to be, what they're saying in a couple of years, that overflow in the city is going to start coming to the East Bay. So, I think we're already seeing it here with construction, but if, you know, the economy goes like it's currently going, this should be a very little busy town here, so, in the next couple of years.
When we, when we, when council looks at the economic development strategy plan, I think it should include looking at businesses that wanted a San Francisco address but were priced out because they could come here for a lot less. So, I think we should have some intelligence.
A lot of them are already here. There's, there's, you'll be surprised the number of back offices that are here that have a San Francisco presence, but there, a lot of the employees are being transferred over here, so.
Jack, I just have one announcement. We unfortunately have lost our stalwart, Jim Goldman, who has resigned from the mosquito abatement district.
Oh, no.
And that's, he's been on that, I think, at least 15 years. It's very important that we have someone on that committee, but I have to say, it's, he's really gone above and beyond because it's on a weeknight and it's at 5:30 down in San Lorenzo. So, it is not an easy group to meet with, but we better look for replacement. So, Bill, how about you?
You're going to scare people away from attending our city council meetings if you start that.
The other thing I'd like to say is, I, I hope the council could give a proclamation to thank Jim for his many years of service, not just at the mosquito abatement, but he's really been supportive of this senior center for many years. So, that's all I have to say.
Why is he quitting now?
He's moving. Moved downtown to Wallon Creek.
I didn't know that.
Wow.
Stay up, stay up.
There's only one degree of separation. We're all supposed to know these things.
Rossmore?
Yeah, yeah.
Rossmore or where?
Love it. But we, we have a problem here.
Oh, we do.
As we learned from ACAP, if we're involved in these groups, we damn well better have somebody attending those meetings.
We just reappointed him six weeks ago or so.
What can, what can we say?
You can't quit.
Okay, with that, seeing no more items, this meeting is adjourned.